From everybody to tonight's work session. If we will have a call to order by the roll call by the clerk of council.
All right. Not muted, right? Okay, good. Mayor Lowry. Not here. Councilwoman Hopkins.
Here.
Councilman Grimm.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilman Cobb.
Here.
Councilwoman Eggleston.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Six members present.
Six present, so we have a quorum and the invocation tonight will be by Councilman Cobb.
Here have my father. Give us the guidance to do what we should, what should be right for our citizens in the community. Also help us. Get over this virus that is shutting everything down. It's hitting kids and adults. Help protect our military. Help protect our first responders, our deputies and our fire and EMS. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Grimm.
Yes, sir.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Okay, there will be no action on the minutes and apparently we, do we have any communications, Mr. Bridge?
Uh, no.
Okay, city managers report, we'll go down to other business. Comments from members of the public?
Uh, we do have one email, um, but it has to do with, um, Mr. Grimm's comments, so I don't know, you guys want to just hold off on that to the regular session?
No, that should probably be, uh, in the situation where we. Take that under, um, the regular meeting, I would assume.
Okay.
Okay, committee reports none, resolutions none, ordinances none. Other business, Mr. Bridge, legislation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, Mayor, uh, Acting Mayor tonight. Um, so we got some legislation to discuss, but also too, there's some other additional, uh, I, open items to discuss past that. So I'm going to get through the legislation relatively quickly. Um, if anyone has any questions on it, please just interrupt me and ask me. Uh, but they're generally just all housekeeping ones, so the, we're going to do resolutions tonight. We have to create a fund to track and spend the CARES Act funding that we got, like thirty seven thousand dollars. So part of that stipulation is we have to create a fund and then that, all that money goes in there. Um, and that is dictated by the auditor of the state, so that is up for a vote tonight. I will be also asking council to break rules of council to introduce another resolution that I got done today. Um, that has to do with adding signatories for our new finance director, uh, Colleen Harris. She will be starting at the end of the month. Um, so basically we did one of these, I think maybe two months ago. Where we added Derek on there and I said, once Colleen is official, then we'll be having one come back. So that one is up for tonight as well, although when we get to the regular session again, I will be asking council to break rules of council to introduce that. And vote on it tonight as well. Resolutions, we are allowed to introduce and vote at the same meeting. So, um, the ordinance is, but, yep.
Is that considered emergency?
No, no, we don't have emergency resolution, so it's just the regular intro and it still has, it still has a waiting period at the end of it. Uh, but it doesn't require an introduction instead of seven days and then a vote. We can introduce it and vote on it at the same meeting. The ordinances, on the other hand, these were all introduced at the last meeting. So these all have to do with the assessments that I, that we did. So we're looking at street lighting assessments, our, our utility assessments for past delinquent bills. And then also that goes along with our grass abatement. So, um, the first two ordinances. Uh, deal with, um. The street lighting, one is the determining to proceed, and then the other one is the ordinance actually loving the actual assessments. Uh, so that is ordinance twenty five and twenty six, uh, respectively. Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty seven deals with our delinquent tax bills. Uh, so we have to pass legislation on that as well, and the same thing for ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty eight. That has to deal with our grass abatement, so that when we go out and bait the grass and cut it ourselves. Uh, we also have another one. That's introduced tonight and will be voted on hopefully at the eight twenty seven special meeting. Uh, that I will be requesting should council not be available for the special meeting on that date, and that was to do the, uh, to review the tax bids. Um, we can just have it voted on at the first regular meeting in September. And that one has to deal with our audit that we're going through right now. So the cost for that audit is twenty one thousand five hundred. That is a little over my monetary authority to spend, uh, without council approval. So we do that ordinance every year as well. So what we have in front of us tonight as far as legislation goes is a bunch of housekeeping. So, uh, with that being said, I'll, I'll entertain any questions on those ordinances, so we don't have to spend too much time in a regular session to discuss them. Does anyone have any questions on any legislation pieces tonight? No?
There's a grammatical error in the CARES Act one. You've got the wrong, the wrong tense of the verb have in who has the authority to sign.
Okay, that's, we'll, we'll correct that. That doesn't have any impact on the overall legislation, so.
Right, I just wanted to point.
Through my eye and our law director's eye, so thank you for catching that. So yeah, with that being said, I think all the legislation has been, uh, discussed with council, so, um. Mr. Mayor, if you're all right, can we go down to open discussion?
Yes, we can go to open discussion. Uh, you've got first on the list is the curbs downtown.
Yeah, so, uh, Mayor Lowry, uh, and some other council members have been asking about those curbs downtown. Our staff meeting today, I asked, uh, Howie, uh, to work on getting some things together for council. Um, so he's going to be working on a plan and we're going to be submitting that to council. Uh. Hopefully within the next month, month and a half. But basically it's mainly a top to bottom game plan of what we need to do to get the curbs in certain areas of downtown up to par. Um, so Mr. Kiko, anytime you want to jump in with that, you're more than welcome to. Uh, but basically to sum it up is we are going to be doing some research on that, get some things together and submitting to council. Once we submit that plan to council, council is going to have to direct us how to move forward. Uh, because it's not going to be a cheap project. Um, and then two. Once we assess the business owners or they, they have any issues with it. We, we may have a, a line of some business owners coming to talk to council, so. What we're going to do is present council the information, um, and then get your guys' feedback on it. Mr. Kiko, is there anything you want to add to that?
Uh, yes, what we're going to do is I'm going to meet with, uh, an engineer. Probably this week and discuss how many sections that we may have to do in one block at minimum, how long those sections are. And, um. Try to figure out if we're going to try to run a barrier curb up against the current, um. Monolithic pore, which monolithic means when they built that concrete underneath the current asphalt. It was one pore from the center of the road gutter curb. It was all one. Where, um. Most streets, the curb and gutter are one, and then they do the other part second. Some of the areas, if we were to take that, just that curb out. Uh, barrier curbs usually buried, uh, about twelve to eighteen inches, depending on what the use is. We're trying to figure out being a state route with trucks, um. How deep would we have to go? How are we going to connect this curb to the existing gutter? How, how long is it, you know? Um, so we're going to, I'm going to get with an engineer and just see. What we can do, how long are sections, what would be the best place? Or best way to go, or if it might be just a saw, cut the whole curb and gutter out and replace that wholesale. That's all I got and we're gonna, I'm gonna work on numbers. I have a number that I think I've gotten. Couple of years ago, that was to do all the way from Jefferson to Lake, and I believe we were in a couple mill. Um, to replace all the curb and gutter and get that, that done right with, uh, new drainage. But we're going to get some updated for council. That's all I have.
How, how many years ago was that, you said? Couple?
Uh, I'd have to try and go dig up emails. I'm going to say it's been a couple of years, maybe last year or the two years ago when myself and that, and Andy went up through there and. Kind of got a rough estimate on what we thought we'd do to, um, replace all the catch basins, new storm pipe, new curb and gutter. Um, to prepare for a road, uh, reconstruction.
That's a lot of money.
When is that route supposed to be redone, uh, Mr. Kiko?
Uh, July of twenty twenty-three, which is fiscal year twenty-four of ODOT. Is when it should be getting milled and filled.
So basically we need to do the curb, uh, and whatever we're going to do before that?
That would be a good goal if we could do a block. Um, but what looks like that. I kind of roughly saw today and myself and, uh, Derek did not, uh, we didn't get a chance to do it. Is if we see it's enough where we have to do a whole block. Um, there's a potential where if I wanted to go after some OPWC funds for fifty percent and then. However, the other half comes about, that could potentially be a year and a half away, which might push us being behind the resurfacing. So we, we have to take a look at it and see.
All right, any other questions on, uh, the curbs downtown?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bridge.
Yes.
Isn't that due to the property owners have to pay for that?
It is, and how, how we got to work it is, is we have, we have to go and collect all the data and then what we have to do is send out letters to each property owner. And then we have to give them an estimate of what's going to cost, and we actually have to allow them time to do that themselves. And if they don't do it themselves, then we go in and do the work and then we assess their property tax. So it is a staged out process. By the ORC with how, how we have to do that, so. Um, they'll have a, they'll have an opportunity to do that, but that's something that council needs to understand. Once they say, no, we're not doing it. And that's when we're going to have the money to go and pay these contractors. Um, something like that's going to be bitted. I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be over the threshold for that. Well, what's threshold, two hundred thousand or fifty thousand for road repairs? I have to look.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to, I don't know right off the top of my head.
It, it may have to be bitted, so, you know, um, but in, in the result is we have to give them ample opportunity to, to do it themselves and then, then we follow suit and do the work and, like I said, assess their taxes, so.
Any other questions?
This goes from Jefferson to Lake, right?
That is, that is most of the curb that is the old fifties curb. Um, but the main issues we have is in that core downtown from Madison to Washington, I believe. That's the worst.
Yeah, CBS is real bad, I know.
Um, front of the church.
Church, but the core downtown businesses, I don't remember like La Hacienda being bad curbs.
Or even across the street.
Mr. Grimm's curves are, I mean, I don't think that side is too, too bad. What I notice is like the big intersections. And it's probably where the, because the trucks have to go up on the turns, I mean, I don't, I don't know. So, okay.
Any other questions? Then I guess we can move on to the, uh, interim signs.
Okay, so I sent council out a quote from Eggleston Signs regarding the repair. It took about up to sixteen hundred dollars per sign. That does not include any kind of lecturing covering. And I'm going to be submitting that to our insurance for repair. Um. So. What does council think about at least getting quotes to kind of replace those? Because reading the quote that we had that was emailed out to council. It seems like there's a lot of work that needs to be done to actually fix the signs that we have. So is this something that we want to just fix what we have and put it into insurance, or? You guys want me to give me another quote for, to get new ones, or how does council want to move forward? I mean, clearly we, we have to get them fixed. There's a faded BLM on two of them.
How long have they been around?
Oh. Oh, I, I don't know.
Uh, they, over fifteen years, I think. They, they were put in just shortly after I'm, uh, started.
So we've probably gotten our money's worth out of it.
Yeah, and if we do begin, I mean, that's something that we could just have the original person who did them come back in. You know, but I would like, if we do go something new. I want to, I want to make it somewhat a little nicer, maybe put some brick at the bottom of the post, um. Kind of beef it up a little bit, maybe modernize what's on there now. I think a lot of people are connected to a Honey Creek reference. Um, but doesn't mean we can't modernize the font and all that good stuff. Um, so. But if we do that, like I said, I think they need to be a little bit more professional in the presentation of them. As far as how they, how they look now.
What's council feeling on, uh, entertaining some thoughts of some new signs versus repair here?
What if we were to? Have like a contest to have local residents submit designs, pick the best three?
I, I think that's a grand idea, but I think that we need, we need possibly to, uh. Come up with the price for the new sign.
Which is going to be based off the design submitted. So we do like a quick fixing, why just submit these to our insurance to get them fixed and then we look at maybe getting replacing of the signs?
Um, I would suggest that if you're, if you, I like the idea of getting some input. I don't like the idea particularly of restricting ourselves to whatever is submitted. Uh, is there a way that we can look at? People's ideas on things and not. Make up the sign that we like the best in terms of. I don't know how to say it. Just getting that professional thing is going to maybe require tweaking something. And. I'd hate to see us committed to doing whatever somebody. Won on.
Let, let me, let me throw this out there. How would council feel about, go ahead and get these repaired, submitting it to insurance, have it repaired? And then I think it's a good idea to have input. Um, one of the things I'll be going with to council next year out of funding year twenty twenty-one is a, a rebrand of the city. A lot of our, a lot of our logos, our font is so antiquated. Um, and ideally we would like. Our signs that coming, we, we want everything to match, the font, the layout. I mean, we want it all to kind of cohesive together. So what we could do, just throwing it out there, again, go ahead and get these submitted insurance, get them fixed. For funding year twenty twenty-one, we look at some rebranding efforts, and it's not a big campaign. We have someone come and design our new letterhead. Uh, that we can put on our business cards because they're also antiquated with the brown and the tan. You're welcome, Derek. Um, so what, how is council's eye thoughts on that? Like basically a quick fix and then look at the rebranding that's going to impact. Every logo that we have, because I have to get everyone new business cards when we move into the new building downtown anyway. So I was trying to coordinate all that up, so we didn't do a rebranding first and then have to get new business cards because the address changed, so there's a lot of things I'm trying to line up. What's council's opinion on a rebrand?
It's definitely needed.
You think, I, I, I agree with you.
I like it.
If, if I could throw something out there, I'm sorry, go ahead, didn't mean to interrupt.
I was just going to say I like the idea. Go ahead.
I like the idea that, uh, Mr. Bridge here threw out is about maybe possibly fixing what we have. Uh, we are going to be going underneath a, uh, pretty hefty sign code rewrite. Now I'd want to make sure if we went to a new sign that it's going to meet all of our newer, uh, regulations and everything, so. Um, so definitely if we fix what we have now, uh, regardless of what kind, so, uh, the sign code would be, uh, it would be fine. But if we're looking at new signage, uh, we want to make sure that we adhere to the permitted sizes and, and the language that we have on it, so. Um, that would just, that's just my two cents from a, from a zoning ans, uh, uh, aspect.
So I take it from the consensus that right at this point. We're going to go ahead and turn this into insurance, repair what we've got. Then look at, uh, a new branding for the year twenty-one in the budget.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve that statement?
Don't move.
Um, was that Nowakowski with the first and Eggleston with the second?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty, Acting Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Grimm?
I have a question first. It's going to be about five grand repair all three, right?
Right now, we just have the quotes to repair the two that were tagged with the BLM.
Thirty-two hundred.
Well, it's about, he's quoted up to sixteen hundred per sign, but that does not include any kind of lexian or kind of any transcript going over it.
Any ballpark idea whether or not, how much the insurance would cover on it?
You know, I, 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 I don't know, although I, 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 I don't know. We'll have to submit it to them and, and definitely I'll, I'll let council know. Historically, they treat us absolutely phenomenal. Every year we see a reduction on our premium cost, so.
And I'll say yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Nowakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
No.
Councilwoman Eggleston?
Yes.
That's motions approved, five to one.
Oh, with that done and out of the way, I guess we can move on to the story post.
Yeah, so, thank you. This is actually a really cool, cool thing. So, um, Mr. Cook, I did not have the opportunity to reach out to Beth today, did not cross paths with that. Did not be able, was not able to actually connect, but, um, so. I was speaking with the, uh, Beth, uh, from the library of New Coral Al Branch. She's the director. And one of the things I sent with council was a story post, so. Uh, she would like us to look at, uh, parting with the library and what it is, is a series of these cement posts that has a clear, uh, place in there. And what you do is you, you take a page of a kid's book, a little kid's book. And you put it in there and you have a series of, of twenty, twenty of these posts, and basically it's, it's. You take each page out and you put a page in and your family walks, they come to the first, they read it. They go about twenty, forty steps and they read the second post, so. Um, we have some funds allocated. Um, I would like for council to, to consider. Us going ahead and actually purchasing the install for those. Um, it's about six thousand dollars per twenty of them, so it'd be about a twelve thousand dollar, uh, purchase. This is specifically going to go on our bike path. It's going to directly impact our citizens. We have some money in the capital, uh, for this year that we, we're not doing anything with for playground expenses. Um. So I wanted to entertain with council, one, if council would be interested in, uh, helping the library out with this. Uh, it's, it still could be a project if council decides not to. Installation of it. Um, if council does decide to fund the installation of it. Any subsequent, uh, book purchase or any kind of labor that we'd have to take someone out there to actually. Replace the story with a new one would all be on the library. So basically, once we pay for the install, the library would handle everything else. Um. So we have kept fifteen thousand dollars in for playground and fall protection equipment. Um. So I'm assuming it's probably going to be something that council is going to want a lot more information on. So maybe we look at this in conjunction on the twenty-seventh with the trash stuff. Um, I am a hundred percent behind this because I think it's such a unique, cool thing. Um, we don't want to wait too long because, um. We might have some backup with the ordering. I do want to talk with Beth again regarding. The cost of the installation. Does that include the cost of installation where they have a crew that come down and sets them up, or could we save money by installing them in-house? So before I decide if we can do it in-house, I'd have to sit down and talk with Mr. Kiko about the load that would put on his crew. And the feasibility of actually getting it done. So, um. I wanted to present council the information tonight. Um, would you guys want to talk more about this on the twenty-seventh? Or is this something that you guys would not be interested at all and moving forward? I think it does warrant. Um, some detailed discussion. I, I, I really think it does.
I think it's a good idea, but I'm, I'm afraid to spend the money right now, so I think it would be a good idea to talk about it on the twenty-seventh. I think it would be a really nice thing to add to our bike path.
Mr. Cobb?
What?
Comment?
I'm going to make a motion to table it.
Bringing it back up on the twenty-seventh?
No, sir. Bring it back up to next regular meeting.
This, uh, September eighth one?
I don't have a calendar in front of me.
That is the next official one.
It's a good point. We're, we're going to be talking about trash stuff on twenty-seventh.
Second, if I hear, I guess Mr. Cobb has made a motion to table this until, what, the first meeting in September?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Here, is there a second to that?
Dale, just give it.
Okay. So we've got a motion by Mr. Cobb and a second by Mr. Grimm. And, uh, Emily, if you will, call roll.
Okay, Councilwoman Nowakowski?
You're muted, Linda.
Oh, he's muted, yep.
Yes, sorry, I had muted because of Main Street.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eggleston?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Grimm?
Yes.
All right, that motion's accepted six zero.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess we go to the lobby.
Mr. Mayor, can I intervene here for a minute?
I would assume so, go ahead.
We, we've got to sit back and start watching our money. We don't know what's coming in the fall. Right now we have, you know, the numbers are rising on this. COVID nineteen, Clark County has a hundred kids tested positive. You know, we, we got to be cautious with money. Because I got a feeling this thing going to come back and bite us. And we're going to be back in the same boat where. Uh, people are not going to have jobs where they can pay the water bills, sewer bills, all of this.
Income tax.
Income tax, thanks, Mr. Grimm. You know, we just got to be cautious right now. That's all I've got to say.
You know, I, I basically would concur with Mr. Cobb, but I think it's a point that. These are things that, uh, once we get into the situation of. First meeting in September, I think we can bring all of this out. And at that point, then it's either a yay or a nay. Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll move on to the lobby.
Okay, so about this time, every, every meeting I bring, uh, some, some information back to council regarding the opening of the lobby. Uh, the new window is in, it looks fantastic, a lot sturdier. We have the sliding glass door at the bottom of it. Um, we still have the lobby closed to, uh, members of the public on dispre coming in and out. However, we still are accepting, uh, appointments, so that seems to be working out great. Um, but September is right around the corner, so I wanted council's opinion on whether I should open up the lobby or not.
I think you ought to keep it closed.
And I, I think you should open it.
So what?
I personally will have to go along, Mr. Cobb, I think with the coronavirus. Still being, uh, fairly rampant. And the fact that the CDC is coming across saying that. This fall is going to be something that we're not going to want to see. I think it'll, with both the girls. I think it, with both the girls having the situation that they've got. I would much rather in my mind, keep it closed rather than have those two girls sick.
Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Have you had any feedback from citizens about the lobby being closed?
Not negative ones. We've actually got letter, we got a letter saying they, at the last time we talked about this, that council made the right decision to move forward, keeping it closed. We haven't had any operational hindrances because of it, not a single one.
Let's say keep it closed then.
And I, I would hate to open it back up for September and then October comes around and we have to reclose it. The, you know, hey, I'll be honest with you. If we were suffering from an operational standpoint, we'd have to have a serious conversation about how we're going to move forward. Everything that needs to be done is getting done. We are accepting appointment, so that's going off very well. We do have two immunocompromised employees there. I would love to err on the side of caution. But I always want, I always wants council, council's opinion on it. But the moment that one person gets sick in that office, we have to close it for fourteen days. And that, that should be the center of just the decision we're making.
Yeah.
People coming in and out. I go to Speedway, New Carlisle, half the people in there aren't wearing masks. So it's going to be a requirement if you do come in our building that you are be wearing a mask. And I don't want to deal with the confrontation and tell people they can't come in unless they have a mask. So I would like to see how this plays out again and, and keep it closed. Under the circumstances that operationally, we're not missing any marks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You may have had the light version of the virus when you went down sick. Since you didn't have the virus a hundred percent. Now, had you went into work, you would have endangered everybody in that building. Not knowing for sure.
Yeah.
And by opening that window, you've got a suction coming in if an individual sitting there has the virus. Not all of these masks are working. So I don't feel we should risk everybody in that, especially uh, I can't think of the redhead.
Toria.
And, 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 and the one in the window. They both have issues, correct?
Yeah, but we're not, yeah, yeah. But that's about as much as that we can talk about that, but yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking on the health issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, I can't, we can't, I can't sit there and say what's, what's, what's the issue is. But yeah, you, you're right. We, we do have some employees in there that would be definitely compromised should they get exposed.
Well, the standpoint of the fact of it is, if one person gets that virus. Then I would say that we're probably going to end up being quarantined for the fourteen days, which is two weeks. So I personally cannot, in my own mind, see any, any sense in opening that since we've had no. Influence from the citizens about trying to be proactive with this.
Uh, my, and on the planning and zoning, the Dropbox has been working fine. I mean, I, I get permits, daily applications, daily in that Dropbox. You know, with application fees and it's gone very smoothly. Uh, we also now have the capability on our website right now where you could actually submit a zoning application online. Fill it out all digitally and it submits it to it. So uh, you know, we have ways to have that, that interaction without being face to face. And I've had some uh, that have requested or maybe needed, forgot a signature. And uh, we have met in the parking lot outside with masks on uh, to get that signature. And it's so far, there has been no complaints to me as far as uh, getting permits and applications back and forth to our office. So it, it, the Dropbox is, is right now, it has been working perfectly fine.
Any other comments? Do you really, do you want to motion to leave that thing closed?
Uh, I, I got it. We're good.
All right. Does anybody have anything else for this work session?
I don't.
We're still going to keep the children house clean.
Yeah, I, I think that's in my safety manager report for regular session. It just says we're not accepting reservations, but until the state reduces that limit of gathering, there's, there's no point of opening.
Well, somebody's in there accepting reservations because my granddaughter called to set up for a rental on the. And it said they was taking reservations.
Not on our place, they're not. Somebody called.
That's what she was told.
She called New Carlisle? There's two other ones in New Carlisle, but they're actually governed by the township.
She called New Carlisle.
Taken, anyway, that's not important, but no.
I'm, I'm just stating, I mean.
Thank you for the information. I'll definitely talk about it with the staff if they're giving out wrong information.
All right. Being anything else that uh, we choose to talk about on this work session? If not, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cobb and who was the second?
Mrs. Aggleston.
Peggy, okay. If you will, Emily?
Yep. Acting Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Grimm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nowakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Aggleston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn accepted six zero.